Okay, welcome everybody. Twenty twenty three, first W P M D meeting, we'll call with word. Notice in hearing compliance, the notice in general posted in accordance with code seventy four two oh four foundation fire. W post office on the board board of city hall and the city website in December eighth twenty twenty two. Notice is posted in the adult express in December fourteen and December twenty eight. I'm watching this notice was. For this meeting.
Yeah, I remember the notice was in compliance by code.
Okay, we have a couple of things agenda for this evening. One, a public hearing to consider requests for renegotiation of the area city impact, Blaine County and City of Haley. And Dave, I guess at this point, maybe I'll turn it over to you and I have to make that introduction. This process wise, I will have the introduction. And then there'll be questions, comments from anybody from us. And then we'll move to the members of the public affairs to pay us question comments or we. We want to change it. Are we working okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this first agenda item is regarding renegotiation of the area city impacts agreement with Blaine County. So I will go over a little bit of history with you for anyone who's followed Bellevue for any amount of time, you'll notice abbreviated history. We're going to start with the current adopted map and ordinance that you have. That this body recommended and commissioned adopted in March of twenty twenty one. There were several. Fault starts and things like that prior to, but. We'll start with twenty twenty one. And at that time, we'll get to a map that shows what that existing one is in just in a couple of minutes with that other history. You know, from there about a year later or so. There was a joint memorandum of understanding that was sent to Blaine County Commissioners from the City of Bellevue. I don't recall if that went to the P and Z or if that was just a letter that the city council signed off on. But it was a joint letter between the City of Bellevue, City of Haley and Blaine County Rec District. Where the Rec District had been working with the new landowners that purchased the property after the adoption of the current A C I map. Which was done in twenty one, somewhere between within that year, the property changed hands and they started working with the Rec District on what. From a high level. View of it, what I would call is is a recognition and housing focused. Plan for the area. And so then the landowner sent a request to Bellevue, the City of Haley and the city and Blaine County. Requesting that we renegotiate the map. And I'll get into the details of that based on on some of those plans that they developed with the Rec District, some of the ideas that they had goals for the property. That's in that's exhibit eighty one in your packet is is that letter. And then with that list of app that showed their their line that they desire to have the A C I. The Bellevue City Council sent the questions, so they they looked at this request from the from the landowner. And then sent the questions is is the terminology, this state code to the P and Z and those are in your staff report. And those are the three questions that they go over there, we'll go over those in just a second. So at the same time that you're doing this, Blaine County P and Z and Haley P and Z are doing. They're doing roughly the same process because there's there's going to be an amendment with Blaine County and David Blaine County. If that's the the process that we're running right now. And so the components of the A C I agreement are two, there is a map and then there's an ordinance. There haven't been any requested changes to the language of the ordinance. The only change that we've been asked to consider as a city is the map and where the line is delineated. So with that, we've got a little bit of an overview here of these maps that I have up here on the screen and also in your packet. Not sure which one might be easier for you to look at, but I'm going to use for the public and those online. I'm going to use the pointer, so you know, here's the City of Bellevue, main townside area. The area that we're looking at is this area that has the green hatch around here. These other areas of green hatch are the other Bellevue A C I areas. And then you also see some other areas in blue, which is Haley A C I currently. And then this is simply the same map, just zoomed in on the property in question, which goes from your northern end, northeast end of city limits here in Bellevue. And right now it covers all this parcel that goes up to the light industrial part in the southernmost part of the City of Haley. So that's your current A C I map. Is is where that goes. Our next screen here is the proposal and this is oriented differently, but you get the idea. Here we're back at the north, north end of downtown Bellevue. And this here is your south end of the City of Haley. They are, the proposal is to essentially draw a line in half on this parcel between the cities of Haley and Bellevue. This is going to look like more than half because what they did is is they're requesting of the developable land and obviously. You know, this, this area here where you see these tight contours is all twenty five percent hillside area that won't be built on.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Sure, people have raised their hands. I just want to make sure we don't have a technical technology issue going on here.
Okay. Yes, all I, if I just weigh in, this is Lance. All we're seeing is the D drive. So it shows presentation, but I'm not seeing the maps. It might just be me.
No. Go to share screen down there.
Okay. Are we seeing this?
No, try.
Have you guys seen seen maps now?
Now there's maps. Great, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so maybe just for a quick, quick review, we can go, we'll go into the zoomed in map. North, north end of Bellevue, south end of Haley, this is the area that we're looking at in green patch right here. Again, this is the same area that I'm outlining here with the proposed line from the applicant being right here. This is what you're being asked to consider is to amend that map where from the middle here, south would be Bellevue A C I. And from this line north would be Haley A C I. And so the three questions, these come out of state code is regards trade area, geographic factors. And areas that can reasonably expect to be annexed, there's analysis of those in your in your staff report in your packet. So that's what you'll be going over. As I mentioned, City of Haley and Blaine County are going through the process as well. The. City of Haley, the council approved this map, this amendment to their A C I at their December twelfth meeting. The county P and Z is going to be hearing. They're at the same stage you are, they'll be hearing this. On January twenty sixth, and then they'll be making their recommendation to the Board of Commissioners as you'll be making your recommendation to the council. The board sent the, so this is the county board, sent the same questions that you have, those three questions. They also asked the P and Z, and this isn't something that you need to take on tonight because you've been tasked by the council to address the questions they have. But just so that that we're kind of in sync and so that everyone knows what's happening, the Board of Commissioners at the county also asked the the P and Z to. Look at access to the property from Highway seventy five and crossings of the Wood River Trail, as well as the size and location of the open space between the developed areas. Those are going to be for the A C I, we're not there yet to to get into that level of detail. The memorandum of understanding that the Rec District, City of Haley, Bellevue sent to the Board of Commissioners mentions those items. But these will be design items once the landowner knows where annexations are are going to happen. So the next steps is that you make a recommendation to the city council. We'll synchronize all three entities' efforts and hopefully adopt something that is identical on each side. Because that's what you need to have in the C I agreement, county has to have the same green, same thing in place in ordinance as as the city of Bellevue does. And then they likewise have to do that with Haley. There's no relationship between Haley and Bellevue in this process, but it is a piece of the puzzle. So and then the the next thing that we would expect to have happen after that would be annexation request from the landlord. And that's when we begin to really start rolling up our sleeves and looking at some of those detailed questions about programming and access and those types of things. So that's a quick overview of where we're at. You know, now is a good time for questions. Obviously, you've got public hearing and you'll go through deliberations and recommendations.
This is this is break down, and this is unique in the sense that we're actually asking you to reduce our area of impact. Most of the time, I think. You're going to be expanding the city area of impact and this board has already recommended the big chunk. Now we're asking you to. Renegotiate to a smaller chunk, I guess, so.
My question is, where did, who drew the line and who determined how many acres to which?
It's a, it's a request from the applicant.
Okay.
And and I will say that there was some involvement from both staff and. Counsel on both Bellevue and Haley, as well as some, I believe there was some interaction with the county as well.
And I think the council has also taken a look at it before they passed it down to you guys, so I think they're somehow agreement with where the line.
So yeah, in in jet, and I guess maybe just to kind of explain and bring it up to speed is. Of what's, you know, right now it's very infant stages is the idea that the property is centered. Around a South Valley recreation facility. That would be owned and operated by the Blaine County Rec District. They've done, Rec District itself has done some preliminary. Scoping of trails and, you know, making sure that the bike, the current bike path is incorporated as well as. Going throughout the development toward the hill trail and increase ball fields for South Valley. So and then, you know, the the other part of that is housing. And there will also, you know, use some light industrial components, types of things as it's envisioned right now. So that's kind of ball, you know, kind of maybe a fifty thousand foot view of it is is that that. The ball fields and recreation park would create that visual separation. It's so important to our valley, whether you're, you know, coming through it, visiting or a resident here. That separation between cities seems to be very important to both cities and the county's confines. And so that's kind of where that would be, and you'd have dense residential density that would kind of be a little more dense around the area, maybe some commercial. I think they've looked at coffee shops, maybe where there's, you know. Kid soccer games or something going on, parents could have access to some amenities. And then, you know, mainly residential after that to address our housing issue, but as well as tie into some of that light industrial that's on the southern end of Bellevue. Or north end of this property, southern end of. So that's kind of nothing set in stone, but that's kind of a concept right now, which is what drills that line. So that spacing wise, that that middle can be built from the middle out. Where Bellevue can serve its half and Haley can serve its half. Without overwhelming one city.
You're saying the E C R D be in charge of funding and take caring it or is it the city funding?
The discussions have all been with being a Blaine County Rec District asset. Asset in a liability, right? I'm sure you're asking this, maintenance of parks costs money, so. Right, yeah.
And then my other question is, this isn't going to affect the Carl Malone lot that's on the other side of that line.
There, there is, it it won't. Won't affect it in as far as any planning goes, if the two planning processes could get. More caught up with each other, there could be some, you know, planning advantages that could be used. But obviously, you, you, there's, there's that application. And there's pending approvals, so those accesses, you know, Carl Malone is going to be ahead of this.
Yeah.
Obviously, but we'll have to work with those new accesses and I T D. I T D will be a big part of this. There'll be another entity that hasn't entered yet, but will at some point.
Carl Malone is already in the South Dakota.
It is, it is, but the part that's east of the highway is not in city, that's directly east of Carl Malone.
Right, yeah, west, west of it is, so it's already.
Yeah, it's already.
Yeah, Carl Malone is in city, but you guys have done made approval with the conditions.
And just to confirm, we're not approving the proposed change in areas of the impact, we're just saying, yes, it can go ahead and be reconsidered.
Well, you're recommending, no, you're you're recommending a change in the map. This is what you're being asked to recommend change in the map to the city council.
Okay. This specific change.
Yes, everything else, so if we go back and actually maybe we can just go. Here. Go to the land juice. So you can see there's lots of different color codes here. And so all this green, all of this is Bellevue A C I off to your west and your east and your south. We're only talking about this area that's just due north. Everything else in your A C I map will stay the same. This, this area, this would be moved approximately, you know, that green would go away about here. As it's proposed, you're you're free to make any sort of recommendation that you come up with.
At this point, no other questions from us, so. Anything else from? Yeah. Any clarifications or map?
So I think that sums up where we were. Paid everything we've been asking for in public, the cities have accounted for.
I guess at this point, I'll open it up for a public comment. If you have a comment, you're online, you can raise your hand and we'll get to you as we as we can, or if you're here. Raise your hand and state your name and address and. I can have a few minutes to comment.
John, this is Jeff Pathley, and I can't raise my hand because I I can't see the button here. Excuse my age.
Yeah, Lance, you're you're the first to speak up, Jeff, so go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I'm very excited about the fact that this property is is in the control of the Oppenheimer Group. I think they're going to do a fabulous job for our community as a whole. And I did have a couple of questions though, or I had a question. Assuming that the current A C I is valid. Has Bellevue actually taken into consideration the, you know, the financial impacts of economic development of this parcel? That would be in turn split between Haley and Bellevue and would this in fact create a situation? Where the cities, if it were in two hands, be looking to jump ahead of each other, whether it's in. You know, very economically desirable light industrial efforts or not. And I'm sure these are things that have been talked about or thought about. I just want to be reassured that they have been. And I guess that's the extent of my question.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. Anybody else? Okay, I guess I'm not hearing anybody, any other, seen any other raised hands virtually or person, so. We'll close by the comment, and if for some reason you virtually are having a hard time doing that, please speak up and we'll try to include you. If not, we'll. So any response to Jeff's question? Regarding the financial applications to from this us, I guess I'm looking at Dave.
Well, I would, I would. I would start with the part about assuming the A C I is valid, confirm that that is valid. And then I I guess the other question was, you know, hasn't economic impact been analyzed? It's certainly been thought about is is by reducing the A C I, what are in, you know, what are the decreased economic benefits to Bellevue? Right? That's one of your questions that kind of falls under that trade area. Criteria that's it's before you. So I I think that's part of your job tonight is is to. Assess that question. So I I think. You know, among many other things, your capacity to serve, your, you know, economic, environmental economic impacts. You know, as we said, with with every, you know, with with things like parks, common liabilities, you know, it's a great asset to have a park that is also a liability to try to maintain it. So those are, those are the kind of things that that I would expect to hear this body discuss as you develop your recommendation.
I guess we can just go through these, you know, basically three questions one at a time. And have a discussion around those and. It is interesting, I guess I have a hard time wrapping my mind around this trade area concept because it's like. You know, we did this with Haley and Haley does a little bit of this with us and a lot of people live here that work there and vice versa, and it's kind of. A really weird, wishy thing to figure out. So I don't know about anybody else's thoughts on that.
Well, when we were talking, whatever first go around, the trade area was basically most people on one side come to our grocery store. You know, or that our gas stations, and that seems to be the, and then get our restaurants. The main great task. Space of our grocery stores. Gas station.
Yeah. If I'm extra mile, we're going to get to the guys. Yeah. You know, I guess too, the other, the other part of the two, and I think it's, it's interesting as we look at this and first of all, that's an approach. You know, okay, yeah, can our, what's our water system look like in the future with capacity? And versus, you know, basically decreased, you know, or decreasing, it was like Rick was saying, you know, really the amount of. Use that we would incur, right, to the city. If when, if and when that gets built out. So we assume, I guess, let me know if you're right on this, you know, that that we could handle that with the existing A C I. So if we're bigger less than that, then we can probably safely assume that we can incur those same kinds of. Burns, right?
On the sewage water was never really.
Right, kind of thought here.
Yeah, and discussing the trade area, it's new concept for me too, but it's interesting the way the map is split. You can see how the argument can go both ways for both cities depending on what's in their respective areas, right? But light industrial residential business kind of seems like it's going to have a mix of everything, right, possibly. So I think that lends to the argument that it's fair that it's split the way that it is. Rather than it'll be in Bellevue.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it's difficult like the economic side of it. We don't know how much, I mean, maybe all light industrial comes into Bellevue and we make more money on this, but you know.
I have a per continuation, I know, or trying to say that.
Well, I'm not just saying because we've made more money off of white industrial, right, and residential. So until we see, or if I'm wrong on that, Dave, please correct. But until we see a a map that says what's going to occur where, it's difficult to to do any kind of even armchair. Understanding what the financial impact could be to the City of Bellevue, right?
Yes, in in really with annexations, you're not going to see. Anything more than like a back of a cocktail napkin economic analysis, and so you get a more detailed development plan. And it's a chicken or an egg thing, right? You you want to have, you want to know those numbers right up front. But, you know, without knowing what's going to be annexed where, you can't do that analysis. So you you got to kind of have a, take a high level look at it. Let me add another layer into this because it was when we did the original A C I. And I don't remember how many members were here when when we did, when, you know, when you adopted the A C I. But one of, one of the considerations is is what does the landowner want? In in that way heavily with the county commissioners and P and Z as well. Is what are, what's the desire of the landowner, particularly when you're looking at a single parcel under one ownership? And so now you, you know, at the time, the the owner wanted it to fall within Bellevue. So that weighed pretty heavily in the decisions of both Bellevue and county when these maps were drawn. Now with ownership has changed hands, we got a new owner and and they're asking us for whatever reason, and I I think. It's probably fair to ask them why they've, why they've done that while they're here, because that will help help you guys understand the rationale for the line. So I I would encourage you to engage with the applicant as well, because we haven't, you know, we haven't had that level of detailed discussion on a staff level to meet the applicant on that.
Well, what's that? If we may, why, why make this change?
And that's, that's a question for the applicants here.
Make a round of ten?
Yes, please.
Well, I represented the previous number. Who sat in a number of meetings here. With an, with an annexation application. Seven years, I believe, and never acted upon by the city. We had stalls claiming didn't have the capacity that you suddenly found now, I gather, sewer and water. There are other issues that went on and on and on. We, during that period of time, had been courted by Haley, I will tell you. Looked at the capacity of Haley. We continued with that. The new owners looked at that history, certainly was part of it. We talked through all cities and we talked to the county about it. This seemed to be something that was tried to be fair to both. I won't say that's the most necessarily efficient way to develop it. Different kinds of annexation fees, different kinds of sewer and water on either side. But it's a large piece of property. Now, it's 138 or more or less that is developable. And it's a big piece for either of these cities. We felt it splitting it made sense, given the history and some of the stories we got about the limited capacity that Bellevue had when I was representing Eccles family. And I, it just seemed that this struck a chord with both cities in our conversation. That if we could do that and the, and then the recreation district getting involved also took care of getting a split line between the two cities that seemed to be very desirable to both, to both cities. And it gave something that everyone thought countywide could be a great place for these kinds of recreational items. So that was part and parcel of deciding that maybe splitting this made a lot of sense. And in terms of the trade area, I think that if this project goes and if the recreation district follows through, which they've been working on, very promising, that that is a center that's going to give trade both cities. I mean, that's going to be something that's going to bring people in all over the country. So, but that's the history of looking at this. And we've had various stories about capacity, frankly, in both cities, particularly in Bellevue in the seven years that I've... Blessed to be able to come to these meetings, I'm here, yes, but some don't know. But that's meant for what we are. In terms of what projects and what kind of development, et cetera. This is the very early stages. This is only the ACI, so the plan, series of planning. And you have total control over that. This decision by you tonight, the ACI, doesn't entitle us to do anything in terms of density, in terms of height restriction, in terms of uses. It's simply that we can start working with you in serious fashion to show you what we think we can do that would be beneficial to you and beneficial to us. That's sort of the background at the end of the script.
And maybe a question back would be, it's like, say, the details will come out once we start the next, the next phase of planning process. How is that going to work out in terms of, okay, we both have our, you know, Haley's got theirs, Bellevue has ours. And then we have, other than us making our public comment to the city of Haley, we have zero influence on what that looks like versus what our side looks like. And they have zero influence on us, right? Other than like a public comment, we can take that in consideration or not. But in terms of like that, that trade area and what that, the future of that, that piece of land property would look like. It's going to be, you can end up with, you know, going with that.
Right, well, you're not, right, you're not going to be able to control development that's north of that proposed line, right?
But you can through the ordinance to foresee it that maybe make sure our streets line up in this thing through the ordinance and make sure that we have an ability to comment on their developments and vice versa, that they're right on course. And that is one of the things that...
And I agree with, and I think also you have to recognize the beneficial to us in our development to have these things aligned so that we, we don't want to have a wall going down. We have been, if not we, but previous owners, then hit with the idea that if, if between the two cities, there would be simply a vacant strip going from the highway. It's not, we were told, had to be three or 400 yards wide, it went near to the mountain. So that people driving down the highway that don't know what city they were in, sorry, but I don't understand that. But it makes more sense to both cities. If some of the roads that made it through bears the access of 93 are coordinated, that's good for us as well as good for both of the cities. We see this thing, particularly with the recreational project in the middle of it, be something that's going to be a real focal point and it's going to be good for both cities. But we need that, that unity, that ability to use roads and such.
And getting back to control, I'll, I'll say the fact that there is going to be a dividing line and a municipal boundary that's there, it is going to, it creates the need even more so for a very comprehensive, well thought out master plan. That's, that will have to work, you know, across the line. So the owner is going to have to be thinking about that. Because both cities are going to insist on a master plan. And, you know, as, as their part of it gets developed, if you were, this line were to get moved. And then the second part of control is probably obvious, but I'll state it. You have control over how you sum it, at least on the south side. So, you know, that, and that will obviously go through as, as an application, an annexation application comes through. And we learn more about what the program might look like, but it's going to start with master plan.
So with that ordinance that Rick was talking about, we can maybe leave in some language and say, you know, let's see one master plan of, you know, both together so we can, so we can put something in there, so we can look at this holistic, so both cities are at the same time, same fashion.
Yeah, a lot of that, I think the most beneficial part of that would be making sure the street standards are right at the same. So you don't have one street decking into different things.
So you're suggesting an idea that the CRI ordinance, Rick?
Well, usually, well, some people would say on the ACI, is there to prevent the county from doing stupid stuff right next to the city? And, you know, we're supposed to pass an ordinance that says that the, the city's ordinance, subdivision ordinance will apply. In the county, if the county develops or the city has a building, the county will create this weird district. And this is a little bit, this we already know, it's not going to be the county, it's the two cities. So I think, I think there's a lot of room for, for that type of a process in the ordinance.
I would, I would say it's definitely, you're going to have to take a step with, with a level of trust that, and to help support that is, is knowing that, you know, both cities are going to insist on a master plan. And so as, as both cities are working with the applicant, formally, obviously you can't control what happens in Haley anymore, they can control what happens in Bellevue. But this is going to be a master plan area that you'll have much more input in on, is it legit, a master plan area anymore? And that might require both cities to reexamine their street standards, stuff like that. They're not aligned right now, obviously, so this master plan would have to, would have to contemplate that the street standards for this area be one or the other cities or a combination of both. But we're, I mean, we're so far beyond that right now. But I know you guys have to ask those questions because if you get there, you got to know that there, you can address those questions. But they, they can't be addressed through annexation agreements, master plans.
But not necessarily like you have on the screen as far as the ACI ordinance.
I wouldn't, you know, the ACI ordinance right now is pretty general. And there's nothing that's specific to any of those ACI areas. So we would be, we would be adding a new, a new section and that would require the county to adopt the same thing. I think it's probably best done under annexation agreements, annexation ordinances.
And the ordinance itself is the county ordinance and the county, or county that's owns is a control of the county property. And that's only so long as it's in the county and not being annexed. And so once it's annexed, it doesn't, the county ordinance will necessarily be wiped off, yeah.
Any other discussions on their trade area, things like that?
No.
No, come basically down later on, right, in trade.
Yes.
Two graphic factors?
I don't think there's any, just like the staff report mentioned, I don't think there's any clear geographic factors that would dictate a split any different from this.
I think as, as I helped write that part of the comprehensive plan, you know, I wanted to make sure that there was some type of a, I think we, as, you know, who agreed upon by everybody to sign off on the council, that some kind of a separation, and who knows what that would look like. But I always envisioned some type of a sports complex to have as this visual separation. So I'm glad. And that was always my vision, what...
Asking you, shall we...
Any other comments, any questions on the geographic? And then three, the areas can be reasonably expected to be annexed in this future.
I think it'd be simpler, made smaller, smaller size for our city.
Yeah. Well, this is as far as it doesn't reach other than the package, but anything else, that's...
I think you come out then, just because I will guarantee you that as this development goes, we do not want to do it in the county. County zoning, so in terms of, and my clients are very dedicated to making something good in terms of the development, it will likely be annexed more quickly than you believe.
Do we have any sense or indication of how quickly Haley would be looking to annex this, that portion into, into city of Haley?
They already approved this, so I would say...
That's what I'm...
I would say on a staff level, I think staff has been, in Haley leadership, has been very eager to annex.
An understatement, I would say, rest.
Any other, you know, questions or comments or...
Is there any? Would we have a way to... My concern is this. If, if Haley wants to stand on the gas and annex their new, newly acquired portion of their ACI and development moves forward with that, that, that portion is now inside their city limits and our portion is still just in our ACI. And the impression I have is that ACI affords fewer fewer controls available to us to, to influence what does or doesn't happen in our ACI versus within city limits. And so now we are in a, in a scenario where we've got city of Haley and then city of Bellevue and Bellevue ACI. Potentially that, that whole new portion of city of Haley gets developed out and the BCRD portion of it gets, gets shifted mostly or entirely onto Bellevue ACI. And we lose a significant chunk of the new, the newly drawn ACI. Does that make sense? I mean, obviously I'm not saying that's a, that's a foregone conclusion or even likely. It would be, I'd be interested in exploring options to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Just like a timing and a sequence, sequence.
Yeah, some sort of agreement from BCRD that, you know, that that sports complex gets situated evenly between the two. I don't know. You know, an agreement from city of Haley that, that some portion of that get dedicated to the sports complex. You know, schedule the space, yeah, something along those lines.
So your, your concerns are shared by the mayor. And the mayor has expressed those concerns with city of Haley. And I'll characterize Haley's response to those concerns. And let me just make sure that I'm understanding what you're saying is that applicant was forward with the annexation in Haley and nothing in Bellevue. And then Bellevue, you know, or in Bellevue, it meant downturn, something happens and Haley's got the spoils, Bellevue doesn't, essentially. Yeah, so that was expressed among the mayors. The response from Haley was, well, we can't let your capacity to serve slow us down. But I would say that when that concern was expressed with the ownership group, well, no guarantees were made. I think, I hate to speak for the mayor without her here. But I think those, some of those concerns were eased in talking through how, how they envision proceeding with these, with this development. And I don't know if the applicant team can expand on any of that. But I will say that, that obviously it's been on staff in the mayor's radar. And, you know, there hasn't been any guarantees. The mayor did propose, I think we called it concurrent annexations at, at one point and asked for an agreement on that, Haley wasn't interested. So again, it's a very legitimate concern. And if this body can come up with ways to help mitigate that concern, that would be very helpful. I don't know if there's, there's any more, I think was on that meeting that Catherine had with Dr. Farmers Park. I missed everything out there from the applicant's perspective.
I don't think so. This is early, early on, I mean, the cities have been talking about this for a number of months now. But I don't believe any of those, I think that's too early. But I don't believe any of those. I think that's too early. It's sort of addressed. I understand the concern, certainly. If this project goes, this whole area will start to develop, but not one of those. Part of it is we not be developed. I mean, I mean, maybe a little something in. Passing cities to handle parts and parts of another thing. Certainly. To me, the conversations between the two cities that I've. Been in on them quite cooperative. The staff are now talking to each other. But as far as where we don't know. Where that's going to go yet. Get through this process and then get started with zoning and number of other.
Is, is it fair to ask the applicant team if you anticipate doing both annexation applications at the same time?
In, in one of the reasons we reached that this property was, especially it was part of the city's. So it was clear the city's wanted that open space. They wanted to be CRD, be CRD. So a lot of issues. Talking about, we've done a lot of conversations about it. I think that there is a little bit. Trust here. If you look at every place we've developed or talked to mayors or cities or counties, it's always been a cooperative approach. And we started very beginning with TGL. Mark Sandell's on the phone, their representative. Regardless of the cities feel. Master plan is critical to the success of this project. Do that master plan. So we're all on board with the master plan. I think part of this is just working together as we have for the last bunch of months. To work through this if we move forward. As Evan says, really early, better starting. Maybe start one. Thank you. But I think it's important to note. Didn't show. This is. This kind of product in Haley, this kind of project in Bellevue, look at the map of the plan. As Skip said, I think the Oppenheimer group both from the beginning looked at this as a cooperative kind of project between the two. So it's not. We drew the line and so we've got a magic plan over here. We'll do a different magic plan on the Bellevue side. I think it's instructive to look at that, even though that's a conceptual plan, obviously, because we don't know if the zone even do the right left be. But. I think if you look at that, it shows this, the spirit that they went about.
I see Mark back there from the BCRD and, and maybe.
Uh, speaking of the devil.
A statement, he's, he's here, it's over your shoulder. Curious, Mark, to hear your. Your commitment. You, the BCRD's commitment and, and, and vision of. One, one, and this is from the, from Bellevue's perspective as far as. You know, keeping some kind of a separation and how the BCRD's, what the BCRD's role could be about in your vision of that.
Yeah. So our name's been thrown around a bit. We're not an applicant, so to be clear. But we do have a potential role to play and I've been very interested in us playing that role. We've had ongoing conversation with the Oppenheimer group. Just as a bit of background. When I was in, I'm fifty, when I was in high school, I played baseball in the same fields that we play baseball in today and they were pretty back then. So one of the interests that I've had, I grew up in drone. So we would come up here and eat. I set business members, my friend compound fracturing his arm on Nelson Field. Back in the eighties. So I think that from our perspective, we've had a lot of conversation with the community about what's the potential and all of the development aside, what's the potential? Of what could be done here to expand recreational access. And it just so happens to align with what the Oppenheimer group wants to do. I think we have a lot of things happening in our community right now. Bellevue actually stands at a point where you can help solve a lot of our problems. Around housing course, you have a development proposal south of Bellevue and that's going here. These are two big proposals that could do a lot for our community. But the community member, I think this is an important project. And I think just keeping the eye on this, keep moving forward. It's a split. I recognize that the city of Bellevue wants to get all that you can, but at the same time. We have growth pressures that are pressing us at all fronts. And then from a recreational standpoint, the BCRD with this opportunity presented itself, and there's a lot of details to be worked through. But what it presented for us was an opportunity to think about, well, what is the recreational opportunity we can provide? To a number of citizens in our community and Woodside and Bellevue represent very large constituency of young people that we serve. Both from Hispanic, uh, community as well as just where our young people live. Um, are in these two communities and applying that property. That the Oppenheimer's purchased is a place where we can actually expand and make some sense to expand. Given that we want to protect natural areas, we don't want to sprawl. This could help minimize some of that sprawl. It's one of the few places in our community where this can happen. So I think from our perspective, we're committed to work with the team. Work with the community to form a, a vision for what could happen here over the next however many years it's going to take. But we're certainly committed to do what we can do to make it happen. And we've agreed to, uh, basically the component that would split the two cities. That could be a BCRD complex that be split between Haley and Bellevue. And as far as I'm concerned. I can work with both cities, bond with either one. Our staff can work with both cities. We have staff in both cities. We all live in this community, so. From my perspective, this should be completely workable. It's just a matter of then having services, different needs. I think those are all these details that obviously take a lot of work, but we get through, but BCRD is certainly committed to be a partner. And try to help this get done and engage the community throughout this entire process. So we've been working on it now, let's say. For almost a year, um, as far as like what could this be? And of course, nothing is set in stone yet. We don't have an agreement. This is very early. When we get to these different processes from a, a city standpoint and the county. But BCRD is very committed to make something happen.
I think there's just gonna have to be. A level of trust.
You're, you're starting at a hundred thousand feet, you'll get to fifty thousand with an annexation request. And then you'll start going into a master plan. You know, you'll eventually get to the ground. Uh, but if you think about it, you're, you're, you're at the top of it, right?
Can I, one more thing, John? Um, Mark Davidson, again, we also would want to go through a planning process, much like David just laying out. We would engage the public in what we, the, the part that we may play in this, we would engage the public to see our. Just that on the.
Unless there's any other discussion.
Yeah, um, I'd like to move to recommend the approval of the request for reconsideration of the area of the impact of county and Haley. Subject to the conditions listed in the notice.
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll move on to. Actually, number two, I think. Consider designer view applications submitted by Tim Olton Hillside Automotive for construction of a new forty nine foot shop located in this two ham road. Oh yeah, so yeah, we'll just, um, call thirty.
I have a potential conflict of interest. Um, the applicant is a client of the accounting firm that I have financial interest in. Um, and based on Rick's recommendation before, when we had this issue, I refused.
Anybody else?
Anybody else?
I think I'll fly.
Alright. Okay, so let's see with that. Ashley, do you have anything? We all had a chance to, thanks, Rex. A chance to look through this.
I'm just gonna do a quick introduction and then I'm gonna hand it over to Tim Olson, the applicant, actually here. Let's explain it a little bit. Um, I just wanted to. The main reason that we're going through a designer view as early as we are in the process. Is he needs to stay in line with his production of the, the shop of the unit. And in order to do so, he needs your guys' approval of it. So it's a pre-built fabricated building. And so in order to stay in production with it, he has to go through the designer due for you guys to approve the building. And so he's probably a little ways out of building it, but he wanted to go through the designer view to ensure your guys' approval before he went.
And so.
And went through and first total building. Exactly, so. This is Tim Olson.
I'm Tim Olson and, uh, yeah, as I actually stated, this. The whole reason I'm, I'm here is just, I mean, the number one reason is just to get approval for color. I mean, all of the other details, I'm fine with sorting out whatever other issues there are. And I, there's probably going to be a bunch where we've got to do, um, to meet the city requirements, I'm okay with that. But my number one goal today is colors and I'm a little bit color indifferent. My wife's a lot better at it, so she can chose the colors. Um, so if you guys look at that and kind of approve it, but, um. What we're doing, you know, kind of the essence of the project is, I mean, isn't driven by my shop, seeing a hundred cars that are there daily. And I mean, as everybody knows, the town has been overrun with people, feels like. Uh, which is a good thing, right? We're, we're not planning, but we need some more to pass it, you know, we're, we're a small three bay shop, you know, we actually have. Three mechanics, myself and an apprentice kid all working in that small area. Uh, we're kind of on top of each other. And hopefully, you know, if we get this new facility built, we'll continue in our old facility. And be able to turn the cars a little bit more. Quickly, so they're not sitting there as long and I would hope to get our, our parking situation a little bit reined in. That's been a problem for us, a really big problem. And believe it or not, you know. We do work on that kind of daily with getting cars in and out and ones that are, need to go away and. All the different processes that need to happen there, but, um, so yeah, we're proposing a forty eight hundred square foot shop, uh, right next to where we're at. And we'll be utilizing both locations. And yeah, which is kind of the essence of trying to get more cars fixed, you know, there's just more cars here and, and. Not enough being fixed daily, you know, we kind of. Seems like ten come in and we ship six out, so you can see how that stacks up on each other. And I talked with, uh, actually Diane when she was in, um, you know, about the metal buildings. And so how that kind of works is it's a little bit car before the horse, you know, to get engineered plans, you gotta kind of put this money down, get going with that. And so I'm about midway through that process and the next step is to kind of get approval for, for colors and things. And so I've worked. As much as I could as far as position on a property and giving you guys as much information as I have as far as where it's gonna sit. On that property and with actually included all the exclusions or not exclusions. Yeah, the standards and. Conditions, that's where. Yeah, the different conditions that I need to be, and I'm okay with all those, you know. The sidewalk and other things, the things that I need to do, I'm okay with those things, but, uh. You know, right now I just want to get approved for color so I can. Get moving along. I'd like to get this project done this year as quickly as possible. Just because like I said, we are kind of working on top of each other.
Maybe one question that I have. And I wasn't, I couldn't quite understand or determine from the rendering which. Which side was gonna actually face the.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, the easiest way to look at that, I noticed that I think. Oh, Mike Matthias drew this up, but I think he did leave like a little inmate, but if you look at that property, it's strange. Somebody doesn't shape that. I'd be curious. But the longest section of that property, it's on the left paper, that would be highway seventy five.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and then the front of that is, is Gannett Road. So the top of your paper would be Gannett and that longest stretch is, is highway seventy five.
And there is, are you asking about where the building is?
Which, which side?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, so right where you're at, that, that is something like, uh. If you were gonna give cardinal directions, you would be standing on highway seventy five from the north class.
So I'd be, I'd be standing. I'd be standing on highway seventy five.
Yep, yep, exactly.
This would face highway seven.
Exactly, yeah. And that, that rendering isn't a hundred percent. I was trying to, you know, know that felt to getting perfect renderings, but there's actually kind of a tangible covering for that.
Yeah, and I saw that on the.
On the plans. Ten by twenty foot. Um, extension, just covering to keep, you know, people in and out, just because that is facing north, kind of worried about ice and things, which we have in our other real events. Problem, you know, especially for the. And then we would, you know, I talked with. Actually about, you know, on that, that side that you're looking at, the side that would be facing highway seventy five, you know, we talked about having. Something really similar to like what the sawtooth plumbing building has on a part of their building, you know, as far as like that sawtooth metal cut out that they have. Something just, that was one of Diane's concerns was to kind of break the front of that building up a little bit.
Right.
That's where we put the sport windows there and we're thinking about putting that. That, that big metal one, whatever you call those.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was, we, I think I visited with, with Diane one time.
Yeah, yeah.
And yeah, that would. I don't know, it'd be interesting, I may or may not fit there with, it's a bit, you know, you've got three doors there already and then some windows, so it's already kind of opened up a little bit, so.
The windows helped, for sure.
Put something in there just to put in there, that was awkward.
Yeah.
Um, but also, you know, and that's why I was curious about what was, which was face.
And then not decide with the three doors, decide with just the four windows. That would be the highway seventy five side.
Yeah.
Oh, this?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
With the three bay doors.
The bottom one's towards Gannett and the top one is towards.
That would make sense.
Yes.
Yeah, and that bottom picture that you're looking at is, is kind of in order, looking from the United Road.
No, you know, the one thing I would say about the, the difference between the, the. Sawtooth plumbing one and it might be a little bit busy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Instead of.
You mean their design?
Yeah.
Yes.
Like you said, some of these things, I'm, like I said, a little bit color indifferent, you know, not color blind, but I just need a place to work.
Yeah.
And if you guys are okay with it, the commission's okay with it, we can do something like we did with sawtooth plumbing where we administratively approve. The design, yeah.
I'd be fine with that. I mean, saw, I thought sawtooth.
It looks nice.
Looks nice.
So the other question. So the other question I have, the steel fence that would be south on highway seventy five, south of the shop.
Yep.
Between the shoebox over trees, what type of a steel fence?
That was another borrowed idea from sawtooth plumbing. Yeah, just because there's gonna be nothing but cars parked back there. Yeah, it's something to kind of hide that.
There's a buffer.
Well, in my. However, it's worked here, or we bought, I think we've seen one that has failed. What would it be just north of? Just south of the hospital, north of the piano, the gardens, it was put up. There was, there's a trailer park right there.
Oh, that.
The snowplow hit that one time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think it's the higher speed and the amount of snow and of course, and I would just, I would hate to see something similar happen. I, I'm, this may be assuming that it's, it's set up, it's this one, the sawtooth plumbing, it's even closer to the highway, but. Snowplows not going by fifteen miles an hour.
Yeah.
But that is a concern that I have.
This is thirty five miles.
A little slower, yeah.
And then the rail fence is gonna be extended from Joe's property along highway seventy five?
No, no, that's the, so that's just. Yeah, that's Joe's fence there. I mean, why is the person got hit this way, but. It would just be from that, the building south. They didn't want to do anything on the north end of the building on the highway seventy five side, just because of that corner is a little bit awkward.
It's a little awkward.
Yeah, I mean, we've been putting some snow there and. That property is a little bit lower than the highway. So it doesn't totally impede you with, with some snow sitting there right now. But if you were putting it up on the elevation of the highway and you put a six foot fence there.
You couldn't see.
You wouldn't be able to see that would not be a good idea for that corner, I don't think.
Yeah, people. Trying to get off.
The same red that we're talking?
Crimson red. Yeah, and I don't know if I included the color, the names of it.
I think it just said.
I guess that's right.
Okay, so it's crimson red and it's a black roof, black trim. I think they call that gray on the doors. It's concrete gray, kind of the name of it is. And then. The.
Wayne's coat.
The Wayne's coat is gonna be a rock that's as close to concrete gray as you can get, you know, it'll be whatever. The rock guy picks, but something close to that, to kind of match that.
Oh, yeah, so you, yes, the rock.
That'll look sure. It's, it's.
Yeah.
That's the way it's going, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to bring it up.
It is there. Yeah. And this, in that picture, John, it doesn't depict it as, you know, like a rock Wayne's coat. That's not gonna be just a gray metal. That's gonna be an actual rock Wayne's.
I like the different material and it breaks it up. It's kind of like when we, we're looking at car on board there, we wanted him to break up the materials. He's, he's talking about doing the same thing.
Yeah, and it'll be just on the, you know, the vision side, on the Gannett roadside and.
Highway side.
Yep, and highway side. The back of the building, you don't see anyway, so.
You're not gonna have it there.
Why, why spend the money?
I, I personally like the color.
And then. And then paving the rest of the lot.
That's, yeah, yeah, paving, there's two drains there, I think that Mike's.
Yeah, I see dry well there. There's a dry well on that side.
Yeah. I've gotta get with. I don't know if it's gonna be nicely or who it's gonna be with, but just, because you look at that block, there's kind of some elevation difference, you know, that's what someone's, it's gonna be at least two feet. So I don't know how we fix all that. So I really want it to be that high above the next property. So and you don't want it slow. So those are questions I can't answer, but.
Yeah, we should be.
Somebody, yeah.
Looks like you got enough snow storage.
Yeah.
My only maybe question about that is we've got the dumpster enclosure in the snow storage area.
I saw that.
And.
Well, I guess that'll be sound.
Surround it.
Yeah.
Have to figure that out.
Access in and out.
I imagine we're gonna be using a corner of that and. Parking is such an issue for us. I mean, we're at some point, we're gonna have to just start looking at hauling our snow. It just is what it is. Just because you got so few parking spots as it is, you know. And, and there's just a lot of cars, you know. And I'm hoping, like I said, with this new facility, we'll be able to.
Move them faster.
Move them faster, you know, because I mean, I mean, it. We've always been, you know, a week out or whatever in this last year and a half, it's kind of extended to, you know, year and a half, two years. We've been three weeks, a month of big projects. Just due to the, the growth of town and.
Driving all your cars.
There's that.
Right, and I just wonder about like, you know, that's a little ways away from your building as far as hauling garbage and stuff, if it would be.
Bring it closer.
Break closer, I won't figure out it. You know, it's just a long way around the dash.
No, I'm listening, yeah.
Or if there's a better way to accommodate that closer to your building. And then also, did you? Free up that area for.
Yeah, one idea we kind of had that I made change is putting it on the, the east side of the building. And also, you know, building a structure there so you can have a compressor room and stuff, so that's, that's all outside.
And, and then.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be kind of covered with similar materials, you know.
Yeah.
Like we need to be, I claim that you can. Somehow out that gate, obviously to access the dumpster wherever.
Yeah, I would do that. Yeah, I would just think that might be a better. Oh, and then the other thing, this is not related to the shop, but there was something in here to talk about irrigation. No, no irrigation, but we've got a long planter bed all along highway seventy five.
He just proposes to water.
Can I hand water?
Yeah, I, we were gonna try and use some drought tar and stuff, something that takes minimal.
Grasses and stuff.
Something that doesn't need a lot, you know.
Yeah.
And something that, you know, is gonna get snow on it, obviously from the highway and all that salt from the highway. It's gonna have to be something pretty.
Yeah, yeah, that would be a place to.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you can grow anything you really want there. It's just a matter. Taking the right plant. He's absolutely right, though. You get the salt, you get all that spray off the roads. Your plant selection is just gonna have to be right. I, I think that's just a nice buffer, even if it doesn't have a ton of plants. It's still just a nice buffer zone between the park and lot and the road.
Yeah.
So depending on what goes in that planter. I don't see an issue with it. It's not gonna want to hand water it.
Yes, and that's something, you know, some of those details, like I said, I'm really looking at color.
Yeah.
Some of those details, I'm okay with, you know, hashing out or getting.
Yeah, it'd be an easy enough deal if you wanted to do, even it's one zone of drip irrigation. You're talking minimal, run some drip lines in there to water whatever plants you do put in. It wouldn't be bad. I like where the planter is located. I think it's a good buffer zone.
And you guys can make that a condition. That makes you feel more comfortable.
You know, I, I don't, I don't see any issues with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What were you gonna say?
Oh, I was just gonna say, that's the one thing that we'll have to do, but we're looking at this as kind of a whole, so we're gonna come back. Yep, full times. And so we'll have to look at, you know, do. You know, approve this with whatever conditions this be on color.
Sure, no, yeah.
I like looks at the building, though. I like the color choices. I like the Wayne's coat. I think the positioning on the lot. Works well. You're gonna hide ninety percent of the stuff you want to hide.
Yep.
It gives you parking.
Yeah. That's where we're at, Rob. We need a lot of parking.
Go drive by it down there and look how many cars are sitting on the parking lot.
I know, it's, yeah, we have a, a problem, you know.
It's a good problem. It's a good problem to have.
Yeah. I guess why I have you, you guys all sitting here. Another question, you know, as far as the, the landscaping on the lot. Way that reads, and maybe correct me if I get it wrong, is it says that of your total parking area, ten percent of it needs to be landscaped. And if of that ten percent, fifty percent of it needs to be in the general parking area, not on borders, basically, is what it's getting at.
It's, it's the applicant show comply with the party expected and we have it in here, providing landscaping with islands and dividers or both for a parking lot with twenty plus spaces. So it's, it's part of our code and it's a requirement that anything with twenty or more spaces needs to have some kind of a buffer or. Something to separate the spaces a little bit.
Break it up.
Yeah.
And I, I was just looking at that. I wanted to make sure that I wasn't. Giving away any parking spaces because it is such a. You know, an asset for us. Now, do, do these all count? I mean. I would say you can make here, these don't count as parking spaces.
He has to have so many to go for.
This first footage of the building.
Yeah.
Sure, but.
You have to have twenty, right?
I mean, twenty.
He needs twenty two.
If you're over twenty, then you fall under the islands.
Yeah, but he's over it with his, with his usage. So required.
What was your question here?
Oh, I was just gonna. Suggest that the snow lot pays away all those extra. Well, no, that, that. Storing. Vehicles or equipment is a different animal than customer parking for a business.
It's not in our code, though, for what the use is for the automobile shop. That's what it speaks to for how many spots are for that. That's not something we can really get away.
Challenge you've got of the island or you got whatever, then you've got obstacles.
Exactly.
You know. You know, some of those roads, like in front of the building, I've been living where you can, but you know. Even if it was just a small something in there, just so those parking spots kind of dead end and it would keep everybody a little tighter anyways, because. People's parking strategies are interesting.
I guess the one thing, it's, there's, there's no more questions right now.
It's not a public area, so it's, we don't take public. Yeah. It's just you guys.
Yeah, I'm not sure of a solution.
I'm not either. Because I agree, I think it's gonna make it tricky for them.
Is something we've been waiting?
Not.
Make a condition?
Like what if you did, I want.
Well, well, you know.
Up there.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
That way you can still, you can still pull in and through around there. Base seven. It's maybe a little bit awkward to get into now. Easy pull in there.
It doesn't say how many, you know. Some kind of separation.
I was just thinking, if you, if you put it here. That makes getting made it out of these pretty tight.
Sure.
Or you don't have anything, then it's gonna get impeded that backside.
No, actually, you say that's kind of that's body. Anyway.
Slope that. Even more aggressively.
I like that. And that's kind of where, you know, I'm hoping yours for suggestions, ideas.
Is that for one island?
Yeah, and that's all he needs, right?
Yeah. Just one separation.
Okay, now on the backside of that.
And that could be used for snow storage, too, right? I mean, I mean, I'll block.
I was gonna say technically, I don't know how much would go on it, but.
Will they, they plow into those islands?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, and it all depends. Is it a raised curve or is it a level curve? If it's a raised curve, they're harder to plow into because. You're gonna hit that curve.
Yeah.
You're gonna tear it up. But if it's. Kind of great curve. Well, and actually works really well with that dry well. If you move that dry well into.
Into that open space.
Into that bed.
Oh.
It didn't do a curve. All your water slopes into that bed instead. And that maybe would work out better is put that dry well right there. And I wouldn't do a curve on that. And just have it flush. Still have your common creek curve, but it's flushed with your asphalt. You can plow into it. All your water would drain into that bed. I'll almost bet you you'd get. It'd be better. So I'd probably do it.
Okay.
I would maybe just move that dry well into that bed and Eric has it dropped. I don't, what, I don't know, is there a square footage requirement? I probably wouldn't go quite as big as he's drawn it here, just to give you that radius is coming into here. Keep this radius tighter. Just do a small bed right there. Same planting scheme that you have out here still can be run off of one of those drip. And all your water's running into that bed and draining that way.
Gotcha, okay.
And that covers.
Solves your problems.
Solves two problems with one stone. Different. And you don't have a race, you don't have a raised curve in your parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
So when you do get snow and you hit that curb, you're not coming to a complete stop and going through your window. I don't know. But I think that solves. Everything that he needs to solve for the landscaping and parking lot.
Okay, how do you guys want to word that into a condition?
Just condition that into a final.
We need to.
This is.
What you are expecting to see.
Dance, landscape, median, off of middle parking.
Yeah, north stalls. Northeast of. Of parking situated in the center of. Or in the center of the north market.
Does that take up like ten, eleven, twelve or something like that?
Oh, yeah.
Reference.
Yeah, I think northeast of. Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen. Planter bed at the. That, that northeast side of those parking stalls.
Yeah.
And then if you, I don't, I wouldn't say has to move that dry well, but if he wants to move that dry well.
Yeah.
So how do we work that into a condition of something that you want to see?
A landscape. The northeast side of parking stalls, ten through fourteen.
And, and to move the dry well.
I don't think he has to. I think that would be up to him.
It would make more sense.
It would make more sense.
Do they have to be at one particular place or?
No.
They can be moved.
Yeah, they can be.
They can be moved as long as your slopes of your parking lot all flow to them.
What do you want in that dry well as far as? Material?
I'd just go.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
That's a state standard.
Yeah.
I can go three quarter wash rock.
I said the wrong question. What, what do you want?
Yeah, oh, in the planting bed?
Yes.
You can go rock. As a mulch.
Something, yeah.
I wouldn't go bark.
Yeah, that would be everywhere.
You're in an industrial area, I'd go decorative gravel. With some, I, there is a planting rule, isn't there actually in there? Has to have some type of plant material.
Of what, the planting bed? Yeah, it needs to have something.
Whatever, whatever.
Sage bro.
Yeah, just, I just go. And if we specify that beds to have drought tolerant. Plant material, I wouldn't put a quantity in there that you have to have thirty some odd plants or something like that, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it looks nice.
Sure.
And then, did you want a drip running?
I think. Me personally, I would have drip line. But then you're not, I just have a one zone of irrigation on your building with a sleeve running over to your beds. And that way they have drip.
It's done, you have to deal with it.
And you don't have to water it. Easy enough. I, I'd do drip. And that's just a personal, then you don't have to go out there.
One last thing, yeah.
Have a guy out there with a hose spray in it once a week. And that's gonna be.
There you go.
Just have your, just have your irrigation clock turned on once a week to water your plant material.
It'll be run that twice a year.
Yeah. As long as it's not weeds in the planter beds, we're good.
Yeah.
But I, so you wrote in that planter bed?
Yes, that's.
And I think that covers everything that we needed to cover on the parking lot.
Yeah, you know, the one. Yeah, you know, the one thing going back to the other find that right there. Or anyways, but it says planter bed, but I even anything. Below that a couple of feet, you're obstructing view.
You can't, so there is a rule that you can't go above three feet if you're within eight feet of that radius. So eight foot in. There's a high threat requirement, and then if you go further, you can get a little taller further, a little taller, and that's an IDT. And Bellevue has the same standard on it, city streets.
Go above three feet, but Tim, it's also a condition for him to contact ITD. It's not, it's more of a courtesy, he doesn't need permission from them for anything. More of a courtesy to tell them about what he's doing, and we'll see if there's any concerns.
And I would think that maybe we should just say, you know, no vegetation on the three feet, just on that corner.
On the corner planter.
Yeah, I think we're all understanding on that, but yeah, it's right.
Just provision.
Kind of planning my ground level.
Did I read right that that lot doesn't have a sewer and water service to it? Where did they go to the double bike?
Yeah, they were, they're on a shared.
It was off for the other lot.
Yeah, they were, well, they were both shared, and so that other lot basically.
Fed off of.
Was going to that one.
Gotcha.
Yeah, you know. You should actually end that story, actually.
I will.
I think that kind of. Yeah, I didn't have any other things that jumped out to me.
They guys have added four conditions on top of the ones we have. Um, the landscape bed divider, um, in the northeast parking lot. Beds to have drought resistant. Drip line irrigation for landscape beds and no vegetation in northern bed higher than three, three feet.
You call it the northwest bed.
Design approval of the, whatever that building art.
Yes, wait a minute, are you good, is the commission okay with that being an administrative approval?
On the east wall or the west wall?
When you choose your design, and when you get something, you'll just bring it to John and I, and you won't have to go through the whole commission, it will be an administrative approval. To add to this.
Kind of like a rustic, rust red color?
I like the darker red.
It's not so red, red, it's like.
I like my dad's Chevy pickup. As long as it's not Corvette. What's the uh? The oning coming out over the door on that, like, is that the same steel?
Same material.
Same materials?
Yeah, same material, there, you know, other than there'll be two exposed posts, that'll be, I don't know, whatever color they'll be. They just had to do that to support it.
And we have twelve committees for whoever that was the most.
I would move to approve with conditions lifted one through twelve. Those to interview applications, if it's about ten, also, we'll set up noted, finding the application. Complies with applicable criteria set forth under title ten, section ten dash seven six dash five. Designer view standards and criteria, subject to the following conditions as.
I'll say to that.
One of them. Thank you.
You're hoping to get them done this summer?
That's what I'm hoping.
Those buildings go up pretty quick.
They do, that's what everybody tells them, you know, that building grows really fast, it's animal prey inside.
Now, one my dad did down there, uh, West Magic for the airport. On Ivy. I think that thing went up in like a week and a half.
That's what they're saying.
The framing was the easiest, the puddings were the hardest. But that was a county. I whatever was in that mentioned. Absolutely.
Well, when it does come up, um, am I allowed to ask Rob for just?
Landscape wise? You got my number? Landscape wise, that's. Like I said, one zone of irrigation, some drought, drought tolerant land things. Decorative gravel, I mean. Don't put in river rock, but. I've seen people do it, you'll hate it. There's a lot of that different stuff. And it's cost effective.
Yeah, well, you've just seen a lot of that for its problems.
Be a lot more of it down in twin on the parking lots. Yeah, just hit me up.
All right, well, thank you guys for your time, I really appreciate it.
I think, I think. The breakup of buildings.
Yeah, I've kind of been in their queue for a year. Yeah, they, well. Yeah, everything's gotten so jammed up, you know. Yes, the steel problems, steel price problems and whatever, you know. Labor. Getting called into like this, they put out little YouTube videos on the whole problem with their company's production, you know. Just to keep everybody abreast. But this is not typical, this is like orchestras, that's what this is. It's just crazy. Everybody, you know, this, you guys got a lot going on.
Okay, so last thing is to approve.
And then there was, I said, the third type of. Which one? H two second on this paragraph, there's an H on the end. I'm not cool.
Where's my name?
Last meeting on November seven.
I'm just kidding. One more or the other, yeah. I'll move to approve the, uh, minutes from the November seventh. Now, motion for the fifth. Second. On the seventeenth and sixteenth. Seven, and we're doing seventeenth. Oh, because of Martin Oliver King. So seventeenth? Yes, Martin Oliver King's on the sixteenth. I had to think about that, I was like, wait, why did I? And we may have the catalog update on that, I'm just waiting for the mayor to approve it to come in front of you guys. The art development impact fees. We did an update to include the marshal's office, because when we originally did our impact fee, the marshal's office. Our marshal at the time didn't think it was important to do it, so they've been getting nothing, they have. Oh, you, you guys know what the impact fees are, right? So when we get new, you know, new builds and new construction and everything, each department gets. A percentage of those fees, and the marshal's office, it doesn't get anything right now. Because they didn't. So that we need to be changed, and it's been needing to be changed for a while, so we finally. Got it changed, and now it'll just come back for you guys for a recommendation to the council. But I don't know if Catherine will have that ready for the set, because they do have to notice it. So I would say, unless I hear from her tomorrow. Unless we could get another design review or something, though, some reviews are. Coming pretty fast, so. But we're kind of, this is always kind of a quiet time for. No, they just brought in, um, the check for the fifty dollars, you know. Five fifty thousand dollar, um, the fee agreement, so now we have something to pull from. Moving forward with them, it was just something that they had to do for the council. But nothing yet, you guys will, you guys will be the first to hear them. But I, I'm thinking February. Maybe. There's no timeline on it, so they can, they can, they're, they're just getting all their ducks in a row, that's a lot of stuff to. A lot of studies, a lot of everything that we need to table.
I'm going to make a motion to figure.
Ashley. Thank you, guys.